Three o'clock, and I would like to call the meeting to order and welcome you all to our May thirty first, two thousand and twenty-three Public Board Meeting. And with that, it gives us great joy to call upon Father Glenn McDonald to please lead us in prayer.
Let us begin in the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen. The Lord be with you.
And with your spirit.
A reading from the Holy Gospel according to Luke. Mary set out and went with haste to a Judean town in the hill country where she entered the house of Zachariah and greeted Elizabeth. When Elizabeth heard Mary's greeting, the child leaped in her womb. And Elizabeth was filled with the Holy Spirit and exclaimed with a loud cry, "Blessed are you among women, and blessed is the fruit of your womb. And why has this happened to me, that the mother of my Lord comes to me? For as soon as I heard the sound of your greeting, the child in my womb leaped for joy. And blessed is she who believed that there would be a fulfillment of what was spoken to her by the Lord." And Mary said, "My soul proclaims, or my soul magnifies the Lord, and my spirit rejoices in God, my Savior, for he has looked with favor on the lowliness of his servant. Surely from now on, all generations will call me blessed, for the Almighty has done great things for me, and holy is his name. The Lord's mercy is for those who fear him from generation to generation. He has shown strength with his arm; he has scattered the proud in the thoughts of their hearts; he has brought down the powerful from their mighty, from their thrones, and lift up the lowly; he has filled the hungry with good things, and sent the rich away empty. The Lord has helped his servant Israel in remembrance of his mercy, according to the promise he made to our ancestors, to Abraham and to his descendants forever." And Mary remained with Elizabeth about three months, and then returned to her home. The Gospel of the Lord. Praise to you, Lord Jesus Christ. So we have a very beautiful scene today, this feast of the visitation in which Mary and Elizabeth encounter each other with the news that they are both with child, which I'm sure was deeply moving. And to receive the gift of life is an unparalleled gift. And of course, our work here at ECSD flows from this gift of life, and how honored we are to have, to be entrusted with the care of young people who have been gifted to their parents and guardians, and for us to be, to be able to accompany them in their, their education and their formation. And the words of Mary also remind us very powerfully about the importance of always protecting and siding with those who are vulnerable, for she proclaims and prophesies how God always defends those who are weak, lost, forgotten, abandoned, overlooked. And as we strive for educational excellence for all of the young people who have been entrusted to our care, we're also very mindful of our gospel commissioning to side with those who have no voice and to help them to be lifted up as God lifts up the lowly. And so we pray. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses. As we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Name the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Thank you very much, Father Glenn. And, and as always, you're such a great inspiration to us all, and you always remind us how we continue to let our light shine forth in all that we do. And we will now move on to one point two, and I'm honored at this time to call upon Trustee Harris to please lead us in our land acknowledgement.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Trustee Harris, my apologies.
No problem. Thank you, Madam Chair. We acknowledge that we are on the traditional land of Treaty Six and home of Matee Nation of Alberta Region Four. We also acknowledge the Inuit and other diverse indigenous peoples whose ancestors have marked this territory for centuries as a place that has welcomed many peoples from around the world to make their home here. We at Edmonton Catholic Schools commit to restoring and honoring the truth and reconciliation calls to action. We strongly believe the truth must be acknowledged to move forward to reconciliation. Together, we call upon our collective communities to build a stronger understanding of all peoples who dwell on this land we call home.
Thank you very much, Trustee Harris. Next on the agenda is one point three. As we are all in person this afternoon, I will note for the record that all trustees are present. We will now move on to one point four, approval on, of the agenda, and I do see Trustee Mutala in queue. Trustee Mutala, go ahead, please, to make this motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move the approval of the agenda for May thirty first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
No, thank you.
Thank you. And seeing no one else in queue, I will now call the vote. And as all trustees have, have voted and are in favor, for the, we'll note for the record that the motion to approve today's agenda as circulated has been approved. This would include consent items one point four point one-one, deactivation of school codes, and consolidation programs under existing codes, and all recommendations contained therein. They have also been approved. And we will now move on to approval of the minutes, one point five point one. And I do recognize Trustee Engel in queue to please go ahead and make this motion.
I move that we approve the minutes of the regular board meeting, uh, nine, twenty, twenty, or, sorry, April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
No.
Thank you. And so seeing no one else in queue, we will now call the vote. Thank you. And so as all trustees are in favor, we'll note for the record that the motion to approve the minutes for the regular board meeting of April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three is carried. Thank you. And moving on to one point five point two, as there are no matters arising from the minutes, we'll move on to one point six, the Hermes Creative Award. And I'll turn it over to you, Chief Superintendent Martin.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and great to be here on the last day of May. And so at this point in time, normally I would ask the manager of Communications, Christine Meadows, to, to come forward. She is dealing with an emergency at this time, and so I would ask Courtney Nacorato
Good afternoon, Board Chair Palazzo, trustees, and Superintendent Martin. On behalf of Communications and as a former member of the Communications, Communications Team myself, I am ecstatic to share that the Communications Team has once again, is a recipient of the Hermes Awards. This international competition is sponsored by the Association of Marketing and Communication Professionals and recognizes the best in publications, branding collateral, websites, videos, advertising, marketing, and communication. They submitted four projects and are thrilled to share that all four were recognized. So let's give them a congratulations. They received two platinum awards, which is the highest level of recognition that you can receive, starting with a platinum award for the Green STEM video. Multimedia specialist Alan Au, who is here in the audience and who we all know and love, collaborated with our Green STEM schools, our elementary science consultant Katerina Campbell, our programs manager Jolene Thompson, who is also here, I believe, as well as Director of Curriculum Nicole Lefrenier, who is here too, to create a video promoting the Green STEM program. Alan's vision was brought to life with the program and simplify what prospective students and families could expect with this program. It's packed with intentional information, but it's the vibrant and hands-on visuals, as well as the student voices that make this video sing. Here's a quick look at the video.
I think my path that I'm going down is drawing, engineering, architecture. So I want to like design buildings or design roads, right?
I really want to be a scientist that studies animals, and, and I think STEM could help me a lot with that.
So if you really want your child to go to a STEM school, come, come to a STEM school because you're going to learn a lot.
STEM skills are useful to almost
And as we can see, it really was the voices that are bringing this video to life. So next, I am happy to share a labor of love, which was the staff lounge mural located here at Lumen Christie Catholic Education Center. The piece was created by graphic specialist Christine Plakan, who sends her regrets. She was given a massive blank space wall and very little instruction, and just told to create something. And this was the end result, which has truly become a gem of this building. We are currently working on a project at one of our schools to resize the piece to work in one of their reflection rooms. This would allow for even more students, staff, and community members to enjoy. And this video just shows you how this wall came to fruition. Of course, this is a sped up version of it. And as Alan can attest to, this took a couple of days to come to fruition. The team also received a gold recognition for the two thousand and twenty-two long service video. The video was shown at the long service recognition event. The video was a collaboration between Superintendents Dwayne Lang and Christine Kennard, who are also here in the audience, as well as Julia Sor Giovanni, to celebrate and recognize the contributions of our staff. We were emerging from pandemic protocols at the time, and a comment from the HR team about our staff being undercover superheroes sparked the concept. I personally was blessed to be able to write the script and work with the multimedia team to bring it all together. Let's have a quick look.
You know that saying, not all superheroes wear capes? What defines a superhero isn't a cape on their back, it's their actions. Superheroes are selfless, and compassionate, and inspiring, and we see them all around us. They might carry briefcases, or hold mops, or unassimably walk among us, but they don't wear capes.
Now, I have to take a moment because if I did not mention this, I would not be living it down. That voice, of course, is our one and only Superintendent Fiacco, so. And last but not least, Communications received an honorable mention for the new school logo designed for Bishop Gresham Catholic Elementary School. Bishop Gresham approached Communications with a vision to create new marketing collateral that would enhance the community awareness of their school. The result? The graphic designer Nika Begasan created a modern graphic design with vibrant colors to capture attention and fun school illustrations to convey the school's warm and inviting atmosphere. The design is versatile, and it can be seamlessly adapted for various marketing mediums, including bus shelters, road signs, social media, advertising, and printed materials. These awards are a testament to the talent and dedication of the Communications Team, as well as the deep partnerships and collaborations Communications with their colleagues in the schools and other departments deliver exceptional results. And I just want to say that unfortunately Christine couldn't be here, but it's also with her leadership as well with the team, and without her leadership, obviously, none of that could come to fruition. So I want to say a big congratulations to the team, and with that, I will pass things back to Chief Superintendent Robert Martin.
Thank you very, thank you very much. You're absolutely correct. This is a department that is firing on all cylinders, Madam Chair. I know that I get calls from other school divisions asking for their services, and I'm proud to say no every time, just because of, of the fantastic work that they're doing. And they're all professional, and the work that they do is simply second to none. And so it is my pleasure to read the recommendation that the Board of Trustees celebrates and recognizes Edmonton Catholic School's Communications Team for their success in the Hermes Creative Awards.
Thank you very much, Chief Superintendent Martin, and we're so proud of you for saying no. That being said, congratulations, of course, to our Communications Manager Christine Meadows, who's not here, but of course, to our, congratulations to our corporate Board Secretary Courtney Nacorato and our very talented Communications Team, and of course, our superhero animated voice Superintendent Fiacco. You really do have a great voice. That being said, we are extremely impressed, and we commend the outstanding recognition for not just one, but four categories. And so our Communications Team, Alan, and all the rest of you, you are truly to be commended. Your work is spectacular. I had Vice Chair Chachansky here showing off some of the photos that she had, and she said, guess who took these? But that being said, we applaud you for your creativity and the quality that is, of course, exceptional. It is with admiration and awe that we celebrate and recognize all of you. And so we, I do see some of my colleagues in queue. Trustee Engel, you're first in queue. Go ahead, please.
Did we need a motion for this?
We don't, but I thought maybe you wanted to speak to it.
I did want to speak to it. I also wanted to move it. I wanted to do everything with it. I'm just, this has been a source of pride, as Superintendent, Chief Superintendent Robert Martin has said, Bredminton Catholic Division, the, the emotion, and the faith, and the love, and what is portrayed is, is just so evident in the graphics that they produce for everything, the calendar, the plan. And I do see Dana back there. I miss you, Dana. We used to have an office right next to Communications, and so we saw these inspiring minds in action. And Alan Au, what can I say? You are just such a talented, talented, gifted person who has given your skills to this division for a number of years, and hopefully a number of years more. You've got to put all those kids through school. I am just delighted to see these awards recognizing an exceptional group of people. Christine, I don't know that, that wall, I haven't seen it yet, but I'm really motivated to get down there. And, and just thank you, thank you, thank you for the wonderful work you do, because communication, has anybody ever been to a problem-solving meeting, ever, without hearing that we need better communication? Has anybody ever had someone knock at their door and say, so, will you vote for me? And they say, what skills do you bring to the table? I'm an excellent communicator. Everything revolves around communication, and it really shows in our division that that very important department just is so excellent and helps us all do our work. So I just am taking this opportunity to stand on a soapbox and tell you how I feel about all of you. And please pass it on to your leader when she gets done with her emergency. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much, Trustee Engel. And next in queue is Vice Chair Chachansky. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mine is a bit more pedestrian. Uh, thank you to all of you. This is my favorite time of year because I, I wait to see what's coming up for us and what awards we won. But, but I see it every day when I'm driving and I see the open house signs, the welcome to the school signs, our new schools Boniface is being, uh, got a new logo for their steam. So everywhere I look, these extraordinary signs and communications and pieces are there. And I love that we say no to other divisions. That makes me happy and proud and a little bit giggly, because they're extraordinary and I'm selfish, and they're truly, truly lovely. And every time I drive, I just think, oh, that's us. So congratulations, it doesn't, doesn't surprise me at all.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Chachansky. Next in queue is Trustee Harris. Go ahead, please.
Just making it real quick. Uh, thank you, thank you, thank you. You know, any time I watch a great movie, it strikes me that part of what makes that movie great is the score, right? It's so subliminal, so value laden, but you don't, you don't really see it now. And here, we have a lot of incredible messaging that's going on, so many incredible messages, and we find a way to just get that out there, to amplify that. And it strikes me in some respects that it's a little bit like the score of, of an excellent movie that is made, like, fantastic, simply by the medium that we choose and the, our effectiveness for, for making it happen, for bringing that message forward. So, like my colleagues, I just want to express my appreciation, thanks, and honored to be working with you folks. Thanks.
Thank you, Trustee Harris. Next in queue is Trustee Taber. Uh, give me one second, Trustee Taber, please. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just want to quickly say, you know, I'm also ecstatic, elated, thrilled that the Communications Department has once again been recognized. Um, it's so exciting whenever I see a new video, like, I think it was mentioned at the beginning of the year, when you see that opening video, or anytime I hear, and another video by Alan Au, I'm like, oh, yay! Everybody turns, looks. But, you know, it's, it's the, it's the video, but it's also the artwork and any graphics, really, that, that come up with the Edmonton Catholic logo on it. And I love that you're being publicly recognized for your hard work, your teamwork, your creative work. I think it's so great that you're publicly being recognized, and I also wanted just to say thank you and congratulations for the beautiful artwork and, oh, it's just, it's amazing. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee Taber. Next in queue is Trustee Mutala. Go ahead, please, Trustee Mutala.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's just a big congratulations that you have won in four categories. This is an honor and a privilege, and this is a prestigious award, so thank you for that. And Debbie, I have been downstairs, and that wall is beautiful downstairs.
You know, I don't keep bricks like you do.
What I really want to see, I'm so proud of, is I go to, I go to movies once in a while when I have time, and when I see our advertisement comes up at the movies, and it's by Edmonton Catholic Schools, that's what makes me really proud. Everywhere you go, you see it on the road sides and everything, like Trustee Chachansky said, we see it everywhere, and it does make us very proud, and we're very grateful. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Trustee Mutala. And as there is no one else left in queue, Trustee Engel, I get the pleasure of reading the recommendation for the record because it's not a motion, so thank you for being incredible. And I'm honored to read that the Board of Trustees celebrates and recognizes Edmonton Catholic Schools Communications Team for their success in the Hermes Creative Awards. And at this time, we'll move on to another incredible number two on the agenda, Business of the Meeting, two point one, Student Voice, two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, and I'll turn it over to you, Chief Superintendent Martin.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I would ask Executive Director Susan McCauley to come forward, as she has been the point person and lead on this wonderful project where we have literally student voice from all of our high schools. Give us direction and feedback on the division operations. Susan.
Thank you very much. Edmonton Catholic Schools has a long history of providing opportunities for student engagement to inform the work of the division. Our Student Voice team is comprised of two students from each high school and assists the board and administration by providing a student perspective to improving the quality of education in the division within the framework of the division plan for continuous growth. Our Student Voice team met four times this year in person and once in a virtual format, and the matters which were discussed were of significance to our decision, or division. In October, they shared their thoughts with us on what they thought the board should advocate for on the threshold of a provincial election. They also shared insights on school fees. In November, our team was engaged in discussion on what the important elements would be as our division revisions, Administrative Procedure one seventy, Equity, Diversity, Inclusion, and Anti-Racism, Reporting of and Responding to Racism and Discrimination. Those insights were shared with the writing team for the procedure, as well as with the EDIAR Implementation Committee. In January, these young leaders helped us to think about how we might improve our learning experiences and results in our diploma examinations courses in the sciences, what the important issues for our youth are today, homeschool communications, and what the most impacting factors were for them when they were choosing high schools. March saw our students providing some final feedback on AP one seventy and helping us think about how the, to best communicate the new procedure with students, families, and staff. They also helped us to envision what our new division plan for continuous growth and the associated priorities might look like in our schools. Finally, in April, our Student Voice team helped us look at how we might revision our Youth Faith Day to make it an even more valuable experience for our junior high students. They also shared ideas on how schools might celebrate our upcoming hundred and thirty-fifth anniversary with students-centered activities. We discussed the strengths and cautions of utilizing artificial intelligence applications in education, and finally, how we could improve our time together in Student Voice. The Student Voice team requires great commitment, maturity, and collaboration from each member to function properly. Our members are to be commended for demonstrating these attributes on an ongoing basis and for representing the voice of their peers effectively, responsibly, and thoughtfully. We would like to acknowledge the contributions of Kushleen Cowher, Lucas Adams, Avery Palmer, Maya Newman, Kendra James, Samma Bittar, Angelique Dengog, Alana Lu, Sophie Moreau, Alexa Moore, Maile Wood, Alicia Hamlin Germain, Ava Schmidt, Alexandra Yukoko, Annalise Drews, William Daw, Ethan Coe, Mazel Martinez, Kendra Makoski, Stephanie Kuncher, Ivy Nikito, and Finnegan Sharwa. A letter of commendation will be sent to each member of Student Voice. We would like to thank the graduating members of this group for their service to Edmonton Catholic Schools, and we look forward to meeting with this group in the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four school year again.
Thank you very much, Susan, for that. And, Madam Chair, before I read the recommendation, I just want to highlight the, the outstanding work and commitment from our executive director. And Susan McCauley has demonstrated a commitment and, and outstanding work with our students, ensuring that it's authentic and that it is grassroots and getting real voice from our students. That does, their voices do affect decisions that are made at a division level. And so without her dedication and work, this would not happen. So she proves to us over and over again that she is a teacher and a leader. So I would really like to thank you for that. Madam Chair, it's our recommendation that the Board of Trustees acknowledges receipt of the report, Student Voice, two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three, for information purposes.
Thank you very much, Chief Superintendent Martin, and of course, our incredible executive director, Susan McCauley, and he's not kidding, she's a teacher through and through. We would start on time and we would end on time, not a minute before, not a minute later. And, you know, what was truly phenomenal is that our students respected and admired you. And so thank you for everything that you bring. Thank you for navigating these amazing engagement opportunities for the board and our students. I know that we enjoyed it, I don't know, probably even more than they did, but I have to say, at the end of the year, many of them said, oh, this is our last meeting? Oh, you know, and they were truly, authentically, they seemed to truly be missing the time that they had with the board, but they were extremely instrumental opportunities for the board being able to hear the perspectives, the voices of our students, and of course, for them to be able to share the voices of their peers. So thank you to each and every one of you, to our board, and of course, to our students. Truly amazing. And I am going to open discussion to the board before reading the recommendation, and do recognize Trustee Harris, first in queue. Go ahead, please.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Very much appreciate the report and have always appreciated the opportunity to meet with these amazing young people, these young servant leaders who are given an opportunity and seize that opportunity with great gusto. You know, you learn what you live, right? And, and these young servant leaders are, are living, having an impact, of being engaged, making it count, and, and, and basically, you know, bringing, bringing forward that voice of students. So we very much appreciate that. I love it in the context of, of the way that the division engages its community. You know, we look at this in the broad spectrum of engaging our school councils, engaging our parents, engaging our students, engaging the Council of Elders, engaging, engaging, engaging. This is a critical element, though, making sure that we've got that, that grassroots, right, you know, rubber meets the road, understanding as, as to the student experience. One of the things that strikes out for me as, as an indication as to how important the board has looked at this is the fact that this, up until recently, was a meeting of two of the trustees four times a year. And the trustees saw such great value in that, and with your guidance, Susan, and Chief Superintendent Martin, the trustees now, it's all trustees, full board meeting with students five times a year. So it's an incredible opportunity for us. We learn so much. I do also appreciate very much the kinds of subjects that are addressed in the meeting. They are not fluff. It is all, it is matters of great significance, and the quality of the inputs is great, quality with respect to our direction, our policies, our procedures, and to our student experience going forward. So I want to express deepest thanks to all students and let you know that I learned so much from you as I attend those meetings, and very much look forward to you continuing down your path to being servant leaders in our community. Thanks, students.
Thank you, Trustee Harris. Next in queue is Trustee Engel. Go ahead, please.
Thanks very much, Madam Chair. I really want to echo, I won't repeat it, but the comments made by Chief Superintendent Martin and Chair Palazzo about the work you've done, Susan. You've really done an incredible job of keeping this going and keeping it strong in the momentum. This, the inception of this coming off the ground is decades, but it's really taken shape the last few years. And I think that's due to Susan's leadership, Chief Superintendent, and the many superintendents who take time out of their day to meet with us. I want to mention that as well. They've had a really long day, and they come and spend it with the students. And I really appreciate that giving of their time, too, as well as Christine Meadows from Communications. So all of you, we really appreciate that. And my colleagues, between the administration and the board, these students really enjoyed coming and talking to us, like they seriously looked forward to it, which, to me, wasn't always the case. And to our students, I want to thank you so much. And I also want to say that many times you shocked me, like I was like, really? That's what you guys think? Many times I was so pleased and felt so secure in a future that you were, well, all the time, that these bright young people were our leaders, but always I left with something to chew on, something to think about, something to guide me as I make important decisions on this board. So thank you, thank you, thank you to each and every one of you. I'm going to try and get you some swag. We know the importance of swag, and I just loved each and every one of you if you're listening or ever see this, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Trustee Engel. I knew you were going to throw the swag comment in. Trustee Mutala, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say a big thank you for this report, Susan. This is, it has been an absolute pleasure to work with these students because they are the voice of our students in all of our high schools. They're very mature, knowledgeable, and committed to their roles, and they're very proud of their high schools. It gives me, it makes me very proud, and it gives me hope for the future when I listen and talk to these students. They are just wonderful. We're very grateful for their opportunity to collaborate with these students as they share important feedback and insights for us to carry forward in our education plan. So I think one of the important things is, Susan, you made sure all their needs were met, you made sure they were all looked after, and their favorite was macaroni and cheese. That was the feedback we heard on their, on the goodies, besides the pizza. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Trustee Mutala. Trustee Tibere, you're next in queue. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So our Student Voice, it was what a powerful, powerhouse group of students. They, I loved, 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 loved hearing their ideas, but I also loved watching the interactions. It was always so respectful towards each other, towards trustees, towards our senior administration who joined us. The group work, it was just so thoughtful, and it was insightful, and the topics were so timely. It could not have worked out better. And I also want to thank, you know, everybody that joined us, the administration, you know, again, it just, once again, highlights the importance of our student voice when all of the senior administration and all the trustees come out to hear their voices. Like, I just, sometimes I wonder, you know, it's, it's just, it's such a powerful group and site and room when you're in that room. And I've always loved to be able to talk to our constituents, just, and to let them know that we have a student voice and that we value each word that they say, and just let them know that we are doing everything that we can in order to really make the education, the Catholic education, authentic and meaningful. So student voice is so important in that. And I also want to thank those who are leaving us. I mean, it's sad, we're losing, like our grade 12s, they are, they're moving on to an exciting new world. We welcome back those that are returning from grade 11. It's a great structure, so you have grade 11s and grade 12s, when grade 12, the grade 11s move up. And I'm also very excited to meet our new students in the fall, the ones that are going to be joining us again. So I think it's a beautiful structure, and I just, and I really want to thank you for making it happen impossible. So for that, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Trustee Tibere. And last in queue is Vice Chair Chertansky. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So thank you, yes, it is extraordinary. I was one of the fortunate few to be the original for this group that was attending, and it is grateful. And I want to say thank you to the principals for always sending us extraordinary students and for the students for their commitment, because it is, sure, we feed them good stuff. They still have to come out, right, and participate. And I appreciate that it is truly student-led, and every time the trustees try to lead it, or the superintendent tries to lead it, or our guests try to lead it, you are right there behind us somehow stopping it and letting the students say that, especially Robert. But absolutely, it is truly them, and it is their ideas and their thoughts, and it is so very different from a 50-year-old woman, that it's so delightful to hear, because I think that I'm smart until some 17-year-old tells me that I'm not. So I'm grateful for all of it and grateful for our students, and like I say, grateful for the schools who give us these great kids and their opinions. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Chertansky. And so for those students who are watching, or if you are planning on watching, we will truly miss those of you who will be graduating and not coming back, but we're confident that as you embark on this next chapter in your life, that you're going to make a difference. And for those of you coming back, we certainly look forward to seeing you and wish you all a blessed summer. That being said, this is not a motion, and I'm honored to read the recommendation for the record that the Board of Trustees acknowledges receipt of the report, Student Voice 2022-2023, for information purposes. And as all good things come in threes, next on the agenda is another incredible, 2.2, Yona Sistema. And we want to share a heartfelt welcome to two very special guests who have joined us here today. And if you don't know who they are, they're wearing my black and white colors, and they have Yona Sistema written right across the shirt, and which, incidentally, we are going to their performance this evening. So Board of Trustees, we have to make sure that we're done before 7 o'clock, correct? Yes? Okay.
They have a dress rehearsal that started now.
Okay, and so they need to be out of here as well. Okay, so we'll get on with it. Chief Superintendent Martin, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't think there's anything left for me to say. So I would invite Superintendent Fiacco to come forward.
Madam Chair, the Board of Trustees, it is my pleasure to deliver this agenda item to you. And before I do, again, I want to welcome to our public board meeting Alison Kinney-Gardhouse. She is the Vice President of Music and Engagement with the Francis Winspear Center for Music. She spearheaded this project 10 years ago, and as of June of this year, she will be retiring and moving on, going back home to Toronto, enjoying her summers out at her cottage. And in her stead will be Anne-Marie Switzer. We welcome her as well. Anne-Marie is a former music teacher with Edmonton Catholic Schools, and her career pathway has led to her passion of music and will be taken over the role from Alison Kinney-Gardhouse. Edmonton Catholic Schools and Yona Sistema, Yona stands for Youth Orchestra of Northern Alberta, have had a collaborative partnership for 10 years. This program focuses on orchestral music education and after-school recreation for youth in priority neighborhoods by using music-centered programming. It develops lasting community impact that teaches the values of unity, harmony, and mutual compassion, building foundations to become good citizens and members of society. In this program, students receive group and ensemble music lessons, led by qualified teaching artists at no cost to the families. Students also receive homework help, engage in physical activities, receive nutritious snacks, and are bused between program sites and special events at the Winspear Center. The vision for this program is that through the combined efforts of ECSD and the Edmonton Symphony Orchestra, we will advance innovative approaches to develop a love of music and lay the foundation for lifelong learning, promoting the future success of youth and their communities. The program began 10 years ago with 20 students in one school, and has grown to over 200 in three of our ECSD schools. Yona is operating at St. Catherine, St. Teresa of Calcutta, and St. Alphonsus Catholic Schools, offering their invaluable services to ECSD students in grades 1 to 9. The students enjoy the programming so much that several high school students return as mentors to pave forward to the next generation of musicians. There is a video that we want to show, but before we show the video, I'd like to invite Alison to come up and tell us a little bit more background about the video and how it came to be and a little bit more about Yona. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, John. It is hard for me to believe that it's 10 years, and I actually am sitting here kind of feeling emotional, knowing that tonight we are celebrating that 10 years and that 10 years, starting with the work of your amazing Joan Carr and Joe Nakarado, they had the vision, shared with our CEO, Anne-Marie Petrov, to bring this program to life. And so 10 years tonight, facing an audience that has, many of you have been there with us all the way along, and I'm thinking today just how appropriate that you are our partners, that we share in our aspirations for our students so many similar goals, that we have children at Yona who think of Yona as family. The Yona way talks about showing respect and sharing love and having fun, and we feel that, yes, they're becoming wonderful musicians, but more importantly, that they are becoming amazing citizens. And those of you who will be there tonight should feel really proud of our two MCs, who are two of your Catholic students who have achieved great things, one of which has won a huge scholarship, this Shulik, for $120,000 for University of Alberta, Sofia Judy. And Yun, who is with her as well, has had early acceptance into U of A as an engineering student, not engineering, sorry, biochemistry, and has great plans. That is the wonderful thing that I think comes out of Yona and comes out of that very supportive education that Catholic schools give, is dreams and seeking those dreams and reaching those dreams. So I have to say thank you for being there for us, John and Jolene, your support has been great. We had, like all of you, hard challenges to face during COVID, and you were part of helping us overcome those. So we're back on the growth path, and Anne-Marie Switzer, I know you're going to be so happy to be working with her. She actually is from Saskatchewan, so she's with rural roots, and she is not planning to move out of Edmonton anytime soon. My family life is back in Toronto, and my husband's work brought him here 12 years ago. He thought maybe two, three years to finish a contract, and then later, I was the one that was saying, could we stay longer? I really would like to see this work through. And part of that really had to do with the beauty of the Yona Sistema program growing. And part of it, I have to say, was Alberta. It's an amazing province, and I am truly going to miss it. So you'll see in the video tonight a little bit of an insight into what Yona is, how things look when they arrive at the end of their school day and the three hours a day that they spend with us five days a week. And you'll see a little bit of their, a story from parents, and you'll see community. We have amazing volunteers. You'll see Ms. Barb, who's also known as our muffin lady. She has been baking muffins for Yona kids now for 10 years. You'll just see the many ways that Yona, like your school system, reaches far and wide.
When I first joined the Yona program, I was a bit nervous, and immediately, like, the people that I met were so welcoming and kind to me, and, yeah, just made me feel really accepted.
I have been with Yona since day one, so it's 10 years now, and what I do is I volunteer to make muffins, to supplement their snack. My special ingredient is enjoying what I'm doing and enjoying sharing with the kids. I love to bake. It's fun to do, and it's healthy. It's nutritious.
When we sat down and played together, it made me want to cry because it felt so full in my heart. We're creating something beautiful, and, I don't know, it just fills you up in a really positive way. The experience was definitely life-changing.
Yona means opportunities for so many kids who might not have the opportunities. And just watching them grow and learn positive things as a human being, that's what's so important. And it's a good opportunity for the parents, too, because it gives them another insight to what their kids are learning and how they're learning and what they're becoming, beautiful human beings.
Whenever Mario plays the violin, it gives me a lot of feeling of fulfillment and satisfaction. The talent that is there is a seed, and that seed needs to be nurtured, and we are just so lucky that we have been given this opportunity.
We thought that we are going to buy violin right away. It's expensive. And Mario told us that they are doing like a cardboard violin. They will only be given a violin, like a real one, when they, when the teachers see, if they know how to take care of that. We're not able to buy the violin right away. We're still, we're still using the Yona violin at home.
Watching them congratulate each other and celebrate when they get their first real instrument, the excitement in their eyes and the smiles on their faces, it's like, I did it.
And I remember like picking up the violin and being like, oh, my gosh, I could do this.
In an orchestra, you're not an individual performer. You have to work with everybody. The sense of responsibility that they develop, the ability to accept other people.
It just felt like there was such a huge community, and it wasn't just the 20 students, it was everyone else that was giving their time and showing that they cared. I have so many cards. I kept them because they're so encouraging, and they just showed me that these people really believe in me and they trust me. Okay, let me pull myself together. Dear Melody, I wanted to thank you so much for being a part of Yona and a part of my life. It has been an incredible honor to get to know you and see you grow. I'm so proud of how hard you've worked at school, the maturity you bring, and your knack for mentoring and encouraging others. You will be very missed at Yona, but I'm confident that you'll be successful at whatever is next and that you'll continue enriching the lives of those around you. Love, Lauren. That's the front of the card.
Yona is, is like a gift. It gave Mario an opportunity to show his passion.
Putting Mario in Yona and continuing the confidence that we have with your teachers and with everybody is one way that we could show to you how grateful we are. We are so proud that Mario has already learned a lot from all that you have offered him. Thank you.
And just before I turn it back to Chief Superintendent Martin, I just, I do want to formally acknowledge Jolene. Jolene Thompson is my program manager, and she's been a great liaison between Yona Sistema and our principals. So thank you, Jolene, and over to you, Robert.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think...
What a tremendous...
What a tremendous opportunity. I wish I would have had that opportunity when I was growing up. I would be able to play something other than the radio in my vehicle if I had that opportunity. So, Madam Chair, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees celebrates and recognizes the tremendous success of the 10-year partnership between Edmonton Catholic Schools and the Edmonton Symphony Orchestra in offering the Yona Sistema program to our students.
So, thank you, Chief Superintendent Martin. And before I thank anybody any further, rather than go back to Toronto, are we not hiring music teachers in that time? Just saying. But thank you. Thank you, Chief Superintendent Martin. Of course, Superintendent Viaco, manager Jolene Thompson. And you know, there was reference made to Superintendent Nakarato. Thank you for your vision 10 years ago, and of course, to our beloved Joan Carr. That being said, this is truly a feather in our cap. I mean, the Edmonton Symphony Orchestra. That being said, you know, some very interesting, memorable lines were shared by both you and the video. "We give opportunities to those kids who don't have opportunities." Like, that's amazing. I was getting emotional to see our young musician there and the... I'm getting extremely emotional here. The fullness in her heart, what you have provided this young talented musician. Thank you to the both of you and to your entire team for being our partners and, of course, for being their road to joy. There's nothing greater than that. I could have watched. I could have kept watching. So thank you. We are just so honored. I just wanted to take out my checkbook and just say, you know, how much do I give? But that being said, we'll look after that later. But that, you know, the development of ensuring you're using a music-centered programming for these kids is truly, it's brilliant. It's brilliant. So from 20 students to 200, from the first year to 10 years, and now, thank you for taking over, 10 years and many more after that. So we are most grateful that you've chosen us, and we look forward to this evening's performance. And that said, I do see my, you know, there's kind of like a little Christmas tree going off here. There are trustees who would like to say something, so please bear with us for just a little bit longer. Trustee Mutalla, you're first in queue. Go ahead, please.
Well, these are my schools, so thank you from the... It made me emotional because the first time I saw it was six years ago when we went to St. Teresa of Calcutta, and we sat there and we watched them with all their cardboard instruments. And I thought, oh, my gosh, where is this going to lead to? And then I got to see them at the Winspear, like, in the following year, in May, maybe it was the same time. And they were all in their colorful t-shirts, and it was so beautiful. And they were so, they had moved so far in their expertise. So I just want to say thank you for this program because it's benefited our students, to those who have not had the opportunity to participate and had, like Mario's parents, no access to the instruments. I says, this has been a very important partnership for us, and it's benefited all of our students. And I thank you for your hard work and dedication and giving us to our Edmonton Catholic students. This is an honor and a pleasure, and I can hardly wait to see the performance tonight, so thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Mutalla. Next in queue is Trustee Harris. Give me one moment, Trustee Harris. Go ahead, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Well, everything about this was music to my ears. I mean, with all sincerity, Edmonton Catholic, Edmonton Symphony Orchestra, our sister boards, the target audience, amazing, you know, providing opportunities for kids that might not otherwise have those opportunities. I really appreciated also the comment about some of the mentors coming back, right, and paying it forward. And that speaks volumes, you know, about, it goes beyond creating great musicians. It goes to creating great citizens, right, paying it forward. To me, this struck as music, as healing, music as liberation, music as triumph. It's wonderful to have this kind of partnership with you, and God bless you for everything that you're doing for these beautiful children. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Harris. Next in queue is Trustee Engel. Give me one moment, please, Trustee Engel. Go ahead, please.
I just want to add my thanks. This was just brilliant. Like, what you've done is incredible, and I hope you enjoy your retirement very much, and you enjoy your new position because you're just doing incredible work. And I think Trustee Harris and I think Trustee Mutalla alluded to how important it is for kids who might otherwise not be able to live out that passion. And I do remember, I had forgotten, but my memory was twitched when Joan Carr started this 10 years ago. And I remember talking to her about it, and I remember thinking, my husband is from a family of seven, five boys, and four of them have played in bands together and with other bands, and music has been their passion that has existed within them as the way they express themselves. And they never had a music lesson. They never had a lot of money. They were a very large family. And all of them are exceptional musicians, and I'm forever grateful to Edmonton Catholic Schools and to Romeo Ochoa, who, in his career, in his time, may he rest in peace, how many people who would have otherwise never learned to read a note have become proficient musicians. And you guys are just that on steroids. So, like, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, Trustee Engel. Next in queue is Vice Chair Chachansky. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. It won't be long. I know you have a dress rehearsal. Just want to say thank you to the vision, the people who started it, the people who continue to have it go. And I, too, saw the cardboard instruments, but at St. Alphonsus, and again, was thinking, wow, isn't that amazing to start them with this and the respect that they show, and then to the performance? And I'm not a symphony girl, and it's delightful when I'm on the edge of my seat, listening to those kids and then knowing where it's come from. So thank you for all of this, and I, too, am very excited for today.
Thank you, Vice Chair Chachansky. And next in queue is Trustee Tiber. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So from muffins to cards to cardboard muffins, or not muffins, cardboard violins. I think, you know, it's always one of those things, music is something that allows students so much more than just sitting in a classroom and being able to, like, you know, try and learn. To be able to read a note and to be able to have that hand-eye coordination and all of that. It's something that allows students to excel in school. And so, five days a week, three hours a day, you are giving those students the ability to succeed. So thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Tiber. And before reading the recommendation, just once again, thank you for allowing these students, probably the one time in their life they are going to be on stage, and they are going to celebrate their gifts because it means the world to many students. So thank you for everything that you are doing for them and that you continue to do for them. And this is not a motion. I'm honored to read the recommendation for the record that the Board of Trustees celebrates and recognizes the tremendous success of the 10-year partnership between Edmonton Catholic Schools and the Edmonton Symphony Orchestra in offering the Yona Sistema program to all students. Thank you. And we'll let you get to your dress rehearsal. Yes, we will be there. Yeah, we'll wave at you. Thank you. And next on the agenda is 2.3, Division Operating Budget 2023-2024, and I'll turn it over to you, Chief Superintendent Martin.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and I would invite CFO Grattan to come forward. And it's quite timely, as today is the last day before actually submitting the budget to the ministry. It is not because we are late. In fact, it's been prepared for quite some time, as you're aware. But given the date of our meeting, it simply landed on the last day of May. And so, CFO Grattan, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chief Superintendent Martin. And just before I get going, I'll share a very brief story. A thousand or so years ago, grade four, St. Stanislaus, Edmonton Catholic, learning how to play the violin. Grade four, grade five, grade six, and grade seven, and then on to band in high school. And it was, pardon the pun, drummed into me that learn to play these instruments, and you're going to do well in math, of all things. This is what my parents told me. And, well, that's a segue into guess what time it is? It's time for budget.
Well done.
So there you go, all of those years ago. Thank you, Edmonton Catholic, for that. So with that very short story, good afternoon, Chair Palazzo, trustees, and Chief Superintendent Martin. It is my pleasure today to present Edmonton Catholic School's draft 2324 Division Operating Budget for your review and hopeful approval. As this is the culmination of many months of work, I would first like to thank those who have participated in its preparation, including the various stakeholders who have participated in our engagement processes, including you, the board, the Audit and Finance Committee, which included two external members who are both CPA/CAs, principals, parents via our Community of School Council, and, as already mentioned today, very importantly, students via our Student Voice membership. I would also like to thank the Financial Services Team with special acknowledgement to Norm Schmidt, who joins us here today, and Farrell Antoine, who also plays a really big role in this document, and their respective teams, as well as the Communications Team for the amazing design and artwork that's been incorporated into this year's Budget 2324 document. So with that note, off we go. So today's presentation is going to cover three main sections. It will include key items management wants to highlight in the management discussion and analysis, our guiding tenets, budget process, and budget assumptions. And last but not least, the numbers, schedules and charts supporting the budget document. With that, we will cover funding and the provincial environment, student basic education fees and transportation fees, where we've got some really good news on, stakeholder engagement, support for inclusive education and new curriculum, the fiscal challenges that the Division is facing, and some of the division cost containment and efficiencies that we're proud to share with you today. Funding and the provincial environment. You get to hear this theme a couple of times, and you've heard it already before in the Audit and Finance Committee meetings. The key funding challenges of Budget 2324 are the end of over $34 million of bridge and COVID relief funding that was received in 2223, as well as the ongoing impact of the weighted moving average enrollment funding formula that is not, that is not fully funding enrollment growth. The bridge funding, which began in 2021, was designed to support school authorities in transitioning to the new Alberta education funding model. It was originally scheduled to last two years. But with the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic, Alberta Education graciously and thankfully extended the funding through to the end of 2223. While Alberta Education has increased funding for 2324 in a large number of areas, including base instructional grants, supports and services grants, operation and maintenance grants, school nutrition grants, transportation grant, and created a number of new grants, including classroom complexity and new teacher salary settlement grant. The overall net impact, the net increase, after taking into account the end of bridge funding and COVID relief funding in 2023-24 is minimal and does not cover inflation or the enrollment growth that the Division is experiencing. The result of this funding situation means the Division will utilize a significant portion of its accumulated surplus from operations in 2324 to support school operations as it begins a two-year transition process that will see it fully transition to zero bridge funding going forward. So, key messages. Increase in operational funding, decrease in operational funding as compared to what we're forecasting to receive in 2223. Needless to say, it requires us to be, continue to be vigilant with our expenditures. Budget that you will be seeing today includes $555.8 million worth of revenues and $567.4 million worth of expenditures, resulting in an operating deficit of $11.6 million. As mentioned, this will result in a $19.8 million drawdown of our accumulated surplus from operations, approximately one-half of our ASO. The budget also includes a request, and this will be made of the minister, to reverse a $5 million transfer from our ASO to the Capital Reserve last year to return those funds to the accumulated surplus from operations. Student basic education fees and transportation fees. Key messages in this area include no change in our fee development processes. Principals continue to work in consultation with school councils. And 2324 fees will be published on each school's website by June 30th. And as was mentioned earlier, as part of our Student Voice, fees are discussed with our students. So it really does go to our grassroots when it comes to all of the voices that participate in this budget process of ours. Something to be proud of. And last but certainly not least, reduction of bus pass fees for 2324. That's a typo there. So for Budget 2324, Alberta Education announced an increase in transportation funding to help address rising costs for insurance, fuel, parts, supplies, and training. Inflation. While there is no change in the 2.4-kilometer distance eligibility requirement for Budget 2324, this change to a 1-kilometer distance for students in grade six or lower and 2 kilometers for students in grade seven or higher will begin in 2425. That said, Edmonton Catholic does already transport a number of students based on those lower distances. Stakeholder engagement. This year's planning cycle once again saw the Division complete its Edmonton Catholic Schools annual survey with parents, guardians, students, and staff. Results were shared with the board publicly and posted on our Division dashboard. In addition to our Edmonton Catholic Schools annual survey, the Division conducted an engagement session to gather feedback from our school councils. The Community of School Council's engagement session was held in the fall of 2022 with the goal of supporting the Board of Trustees, you, with establishing Division priorities for the new 2326 Division Plan for Continuous Growth, of which the budget that you're seeing today is a part of. Overall, the Council of School, the Community of School Council's engagement provided our school councils with an opportunity to share feedback with regards to department priorities that were discussed. Its valuable feedback assisted the Board of Trustees, you, and administration preparing the Division Plan for Continuous Growth, as well as today's budget. In addition to the above, administration completed extensive consultations with principals on the methodology of allocating inclusive dollars to our schools. This work, completed by our inclusive consultants, principals, and senior members on our Learning Services team, resulted in a rebasing of available dollars to those in greatest need. So just to highlight, we do have a formalized engagement framework that we're all very proud of. There have been comprehensive engagement sessions, as I've shared. And last but certainly not least, we remain committed to our students and parents who have made a choice to attend and support our Catholic schools. Support for inclusive education and, oh, support for inclusive education and new curriculum. Consistent with the past number of years, inclusive education needs at the Division's classrooms continues to grow. For 2324, our Code 44 students have increased to 1,175 students as compared to 1,027 students this past year. These are students who have severe physical, mental... These are students with severe physical, mental or neurological disabilities together with a severe functional impact on the classroom. This creates the need for hands-on support and expertise in our schools. Further to the number of students, the severity and the challenges being faced by these students is also increasing. To further support schools, the division has leveraged available contingency dollars. It is important to note that the division continues to allocate significant additional funding. $12.9 million beyond Alberta Education's specialized learning grant to support the inclusive needs of our students, $12.9 million. Key message with that, obviously specialized need supports continue to grow, and we continue to allocate additional support dollars beyond the specified grants. With respect to new curriculum, implementation in 2324 for kindergarten to grade three, including science and French language arts and literature. In addition, grades four to six will implement English, English language arts and literature and mathematics. We are also implementing grades four to six French language arts and literature at three sites and four to six science at six sites. To support the implementation, the division is leveraging $2.5 million from reserves to provide resources, professional development and consultant expertise for our schools. So this is above and beyond what is being provided by the Alberta government to help ensure that we're getting this curriculum implementation right. Fiscal challenges. So as I already mentioned, the end of bridge funding is a challenge. And it's not a surprise. Since 2020, when Alberta Education announced its new funding model, as well as the associated temporary bridge funding, the division has put into place a number of significant changes to its operations to address the pending elimination of a large amount of funding. Early learning, as well as fourth and fifth year high school programs were reorganized and relocated. There was a consolidation of administrative supports into a single location and various changes to our departments, programs and school sites. All with a goal of being and continuing to be to maximize dollars going into our classrooms. And that has been noticed and appreciated by our friends in Alberta Education. So when we talk about key messages, the end of bridge funding in 2324, we will continue to maximize dollars going to the classroom, including for this year, using 19.8 from accumulated surplus from operations. And I guess it goes without saying, but I will say it. Using $19.8 million from my accumulated surplus from operation is not going to be sustainable. Unless funding changes, we will need to identify further efficiency improvements as part of next year's Budget, Budget 2425. Division cost containment and efficiencies. Since the new funding model was announced by Alberta Education in February 2020, the division has successfully worked to contain costs as well as identify and implement operational efficiencies to address pending funding reductions tied to the elimination of bridge funding. A number of the 2223 success stories associated with the walking together towards a glorious future that will positively impact 2324 include the completion of the consolidation of six administrative sites into the new Lumen Christie Catholic Education Center that will save costs associated with operating six legacy facilities, the selling of the legacy sites that will help fund future capital projects, which we'll talk a little bit later. An increase in building utilization from 83 to 88% that improves operational funding, accommodation of a large influx of displaced newcomers, many from the Ukraine, that have grown enrollment and improved utilization, expanded kindergarten with full day program that has increased our enrollment in our viability challenged schools, improved utilization and viability at St. Joseph's Catholic High School via the relocation of fourth and fifth year high school students, the creation of a catchment area and the reintroduction of traditional classroom instruction. As mentioned earlier about St. Boniface, the addition of a STEAM, Science, Technology, Engineering Arts and Music Program at St. Boniface, marketing strategies to put into place for schools with the highest need for new students, and last but not least, the construction of six playgrounds and 12 outdoor classrooms that improve access to outdoor learning and recreational amenities for our students across the division. Many, many amazing things that we have been doing, not only to help give the best education to our Catholic students as well as other religious denomination students choosing to attend Edmonton Catholic Schools, but best position us as possible going forward. Budget process. A long and comprehensive process with significant engagement from stakeholders, as I've shared earlier. An Audit and Finance Committee of which you were all part of, thank you. Your participation in the Audit and Finance Committee is much appreciated, as well as our external members. And not that you need any reminding, the Audit and Finance Committee is recommending approval of the operating Budget 2324, a $5 million transfer from the Capital Reserve to the accumulated surplus from operation and the use of Capital Reserve and deferred capital in 2324. Before I get into the numbers, I would like to share a few of our key budget assumptions for 2324. We are using Alberta Education's funding rates. We are predicting, we are forecasting a 3.5% increase in enrollment, which is one of those areas that's creating challenges with respect to the weighted moving average. That's on top of a 4.7% growth last year. Funding allocations to schools based on assessed need of students in the classroom. The use of our differentiated funding model to help those students in those schools that need additional resources. Continuation of a longstanding site-based funding model, site-based decision-making that puts a large amount of the decision-making in the hands of the folks that are closest to it within the school. Inflation to be managed by departments and schools. And last but certainly not least, system administration costs that remain below Alberta Education ceiling. Oh, and last, sorry, and last but certainly not least, school fees fees continue to be charged on past practice. And with that, I will get into the numbers. So I'm not going to dive into every single line here because we've done that as part of the Audit and Finance Committee. I just want to highlight a few things. When it comes to Alberta Education, and I'm just going to flip to the second side here. This gives a, an illustration of the total Alberta education funding. If you look on the bottom right-hand side, we're forecasting $481 million for Budget 2324, which is significantly up from the budget last year at this time, which was $458.7 million. But it is down just a little bit from what we're actually going to receive this year from the provincial government. So it's one of those glasses half-full, half-empty things. We have seen significant increases from Alberta Education, but as a result of the end of bridge funding, that is going to have, is having a significant impact on Edmonton Catholic, and it will have an impact on Edmonton Catholic barring any significant changes in 2425. I'll go back to this slide here. I just want to highlight a few things. I do want to highlight Jordan's principal. It's a really, really important program that we've been able to access, that is funded for our indigenous students. Significant resources are being provided via the Jordan's Principal Program, and we are very grateful to have access to those funds for our students. Our fees and sales and services reflect post-pandemic expectation. And a couple of the numbers that are bouncing around here are on gains and disposal of assets. And this ties to our consolidation of properties. And on the good news front, we've got buyers and we've been able to line up sales for all of our legacy sites. Number of them will just take place in 2324 as opposed to 2223. Talked about the Alberta education funding. And when it comes to the pie graph that we've shared here, what I wanted to share with you is that we continue to maintain very good ratios for Edmonton Catholic when it comes to our instructional versus non-instructional expenses with respect to our system administration expenses being lower than the ceiling that Alberta Education has. And it has and continues to be relatively stable. It's something, as I mentioned earlier, that our friends at Alberta Education have noticed and have been very complimentary towards Alberta, or towards Edmonton Catholic Schools. On the expenses by account, once again, the ratios are all relatively constant. And I will note one thing with respect to certified salaries and benefits. We have budgeted to keep our staffing constant for 2324 versus 2223. And we've been able to do that in large part by drawing upon our accumulated surplus from operations. Speaking of the accumulated surplus from operation, this is a detailed continuity of our accumulated surplus from operation. And what I want to draw your attention to is at the end of this year, we are forecasting to have $38.8 million in our accumulated surplus from operation. So that reflects a percentage of total expenses of 7%, which does exceed the cap that Alberta Education has set at 3.16%. Now, don't worry, as you're aware, we have spoken with Alberta Education and we've been very transparent as to how best to deal with this. So starting at the $38.8 million, as I've already shared, we will use approximately half of that, $19.8 million to balance our budget in 2324. So this time next year, if all of these numbers come to pass, the division will have approximately $19 million in its accumulated surplus from operation. That reflects 3.4% of our annual expenditures. So as I mentioned earlier, that is not sustainable and we will be needing to roll up our sleeves over the coming months to deal with Budget 2324. But we're here to talk first of all about Budget 2223. Capital reserves. We've got healthy capital reserves right now within the division in part because of the land sales that we've been able to secure with the Walking Together Towards the Glorious Future initiative. I just want to, one of the things that you will be voting on as part of today's meeting is that the Board of Trustees approves the use of up to $5.5 million from Capital Reserves for air handling units for Lumen Christie, desk collectors at the facility's office, and school door access controls at a variety of schools. And so that's part one, $5.5 million, up to $5.5 million for those things, and up to $5 million from deferred capital for modern, minor modernization work at Austin O'Brien High School, school fire alarm upgrades, junior high and high school science lab upgrades, which I found interesting that you were talking to Student Voice about that. So there you go. There's another example of Student Voice. Solar panels for St. Joe's High School, that all adds up to up to $5 million out of deferred capital. Total enrollment, as I mentioned, is forecast to go up 3.5%. That's on top of the 4.7 last year. And that is creating challenges with respect to the current weighted moving average methodology. And with that, I will turn it back to Chief Superintendent Martin to read the motion.
Thank you very much CFO Grattan. And so as you can see, Madam Chair and Trustees, that this is a very comprehensive budget. Clearly, we've done a great job over the last few years, ensuring that we have some cushion. But that is coming to an end. And so, Madam Chair, it's my recommendation that the Board of Trustees of the Edmonton Catholic Separate School Division approves the 202324 Division Operating Budget forecasting revenues of $555.8 million and expenditures of $567.4 million.
Thank you very much, Chief Superintendent Martin, and of course CFO Grattan and the entire team. Thank you, Norm. I do see you at the back there as well, for your diligence and foresight in preparing our 20232024 operating Division Budget. On behalf of the Board, we applaud the efforts of the entire team for ensuring transparency through a very thorough, and I mean thorough, comprehensive and detailed budget review and analysis. So thank you. I do see Trustee Harris in queue to please, who's going to be making this motion. Go ahead, please, Trustee Harris.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I recommend that the Board of Trustees of Edmonton Catholic Separate School Division approves the 2324, that is the 202324 Division Operating Budget forecasting revenues of $555.8 million and expenditures of $567.4 million.
Thank you, Trustee Harris. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I do wish to speak to it. And I want to speak, of course, in favor of this. This is, as you had mentioned, CFO Grattan, a budget proposal that had been reviewed with the Audit and Finance Committee, which is a committee of the whole, in addition to our two public members. And I want to express my appreciation to Chief Superintendent Martin, CFO Grattan, and their teams, and beyond them, to all who are helping us get the balance right. You know, while we would always welcome more dollars to meet the critical needs of our students, schools and division, it is helpful to know that we have such capable and dedicated people of goodwill who will help us as best they can to cut the suit to, to cut, to, 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 to cut the suit to fit the cloth, to advance our mission, strategy within our means. This year, although our funding has increased, and of course, we're very thankful for that increase, it does not keep up with either inflation or our enrollment projections due primarily, as you had mentioned, to the withdrawal of bridge funding and COVID supports. With our growing enrollment forecast at 3.5%, we have heard this year's funding due, again, to the weighted moving average. This formula could leave us funded for, I think it's approximately 1,000 students, less than we are projecting, and of course, that is extremely troubling. We are fortunate, however, that due to earlier budget bridge funding from the provincial government and some very careful stewardship over the last couple of years, we do have a surplus that can be used to offset the deficit that we are budgeting for this year. So we are able to offer a degree of stability in the 202324 fiscal year. But there's no question as we look forward into the following fiscal year that there are significant challenges because, as you've identified, we're using up about half of that, half of that surplus. That said, we are encouraged by the culture of prudent, forward-looking stewardship that we're seeing across the division. The efficiencies that have been reported this year in the MDA, the Management Discussion and Analysis, demonstrate the division's full-court press on understanding the priorities and assessing the value propositions of various offerings and options, and the division's and administration's willingness to uncover and capture efficiencies where they can to reduce expenditures and to support offerings in areas of higher priority. The Audit and Finance Committee was also very happy to see the 78.4% of expenditures are dedicated to instruction, early childhood, to grade 12, up marginally from last year, and that the Board and System Administration Cost Ratios were down marginally from last year. And as you've noted, the Board and System Administration Cost Ratios are much lower than the cap that is set by the provincial government, enabling us to allocate those dollars to the classroom. I think that tallies up to something in excess of, or around a million dollars this year.
That is correct. That is correct.
Long story short, we are pleased to consider a budget that, while in deficit, helps us sustain the important work of our schools while buying us some time to make some further assessments and adjustments needed to ensure that we are on a sustainable footing into the future. We want to extend, of course, our appreciation again to Chief Superintendent Martin, CFO Grattan, and their teams, and to all in our division who work so hard as prudent stewards of our scarce resources. Also, thank you to my board colleagues who are all members of that Audit and Finance Committee, and thanks as well to our public members, Val Berger and Deacon Wayne Provencal for their service and their insights. So with that said, Madam Chair, I will, I will stop.
Thank you very much, Trustee Harris. And I do, I will open it up to the board and do recognize Trustee Engel in queue. One moment, please, Trustee Engel. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Chair Palazzo. I would like to start out by also thanking Terry Harris, who chairs the Audit and Finance Committee. He does a very diligent job of keeping everything running. And of course, you've mentioned Val and Deacon Wayne are external members and the leadership of CFO Grattan and Norm. Your department does exceptional work, and of course, Chief Superintendent Martin, who leads the entire group. A couple of things. Thank you for the stewardship, because I can't imagine not having twenty million dollars this year and next year. Because I think it gives us an opportunity to sort of rally the troops and talk to the parents. Going through tons and tons of emails, one of the most critical places that help is needed is in our special needs funding, and in that support, twelve point nine million comes to top up. That's disturbing, because we still don't have in place what we need. But that's a lot of money, even out of a half-billion-dollar budget, that we use to top up what's lacking. We could probably use a lot more than that. So I think what we're going to have to do is pick out some key areas. I know that these are areas for all of Alberta, things like full-day kindergarten. I know there's many issues. Where would we put them? We don't necessarily have space, but at least to get reimbursed for the places we do offer them for children at risk, to get sort of back to where we were, we could do some Hundred Voices programs in sports facilities, where we used really creative ways of finding out where we're going to put those kids to help them. And in the end, prepare them for grade one. So I think those are all issues that we're going to have to get some key messages together and hit the ground running as soon as the new government has sort of got their ducks in a row. And bring this as a spotlight, like make this our work, that we're spotlighting this. And sort of spotlight that we did have some money, and if we wouldn't have, where we would be today. So I really appreciate, I know how my nagging voice kept saying, well, we have the money. And I'm glad that you saved it for a rainy day, because it would just be pouring on us right now. And I don't even want to think about next year with a three point five probably plus growth. So really want to commend the leadership and thank you and all of the superintendents. I know it hasn't been easy for you either. Some of the cuttings that went, learning support services went through. It's a hard task to cut. It's always great to add. And so we will do our part. We can promise you that. We will get key messages going and we will highlight the things you've highlighted, the extra money going where it's going and class size. So thank you, thank you, thank you, Chief Financial Officer Grattan. Wow, I'm getting fancy. And Chief Superintendent Martin.
Thank you very much, Trustee Engel. And seeing no one else in queue for this recommendation, I will once again insert myself and, of course, as has already Trustee Harris and Trustee Engel. They've already commended the outstanding efforts of our team, recognizing that it is through your diligence and through your comprehensive review with the board that this comes as no surprise, although it is significantly, it will pose significant challenge for us. That being said, we will continue our advocacy, especially with changes to the weighted moving average, which we've already started. We've already had those discussions with the ministry, because they will have to be looking at allocating these funds. And because what they had initially intended, that it was, you know, the weighted moving average was for stability and predictability, that's just not happening. So that being said, I agree with Trustee Engel. We will continue our advocacy once government is in place and once the education minister has been appointed. That being said, I'm going to turn it back to you, Trustee Harris, for any closing comments at this time before I call the vote. Did you wish to make any comments? Oh, sorry, my apologies. Let me just put you back in queue. Go ahead, please.
Thanks very much, Madam Chair. Just very quickly, you alluded a few times to the recognition of the prudent stewardship by the division by Alberta Education. And that stands out for us. And I must admit, thank you very much, Trustee Engel, for your kudos in relation to the role on the Audit and Finance Committee. That being said, it's like a warm blanket for us all to know that we have people of such capability and goodwill who are very forward-looking in relation to having good stewardship for these fiscal resources for the division. So that's all. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Trustee Harris. And with no one else in queue, then we will call the vote at this time, please. And as all trustees are in favor, the motion has passed for the record, and we will now move on to our second recommendation. Chief Superintendent, back over to you, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And so our second recommendation, that the Board of Trustees of the Edmonton Catholic Separate School Division approves the transfer of five million dollars from the division's capital reserves to its accumulated surplus from operations in twenty-two, twenty-three.
Thank you, Chief Superintendent Martin. And I will turn it right back over to you, Trustee Harris. Go ahead, please, to make this second motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I move that the Board of Trustees of Edmonton Catholic Separate School Division approves the transfer of five million dollars from Edmonton Catholic Separate School Division's capital reserves to its accumulated surplus from operations, ASO, in twenty-two, twenty-three.
Thank you, Trustee Harris. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
Just very quickly, I just want to flag and highlight, of course, how extremely important this element is for us to ensure that our operating reserves are supported to the extent that's going to be needed on a go-forward basis. With the announcement of the design funding for the Rundle Heights consolidation of three older schools into a single twenty-first century learning environment, we're very hopeful, of course, for full funding for that project, as is the case and has been the case with other project approvals. So this approval would set us on, set our operating reserves on solid footing for the near future, at least. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Trustee Harris. And I don't see anyone else in queue, so I will insert myself and also share my support for the transfer, considering our current budget reality and that Alberta Education needs to fully fund the consolidation replacement of schools. So thank you for this. And at this time, we will call the vote for the second recommendation. If I could please get all trustees to vote on this second motion. Okay, there you have it. So all trustees have voted, all are in favor. So for the record, please note the motion is carried. Thank you very much. And trustee, sorry, Chief Superintendent Martin, I'll turn it back over to you for the third recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this third recommendation is with respect to using some of our accumulated surplus and capital reserves, which is exactly what we're doing it for. We recommend that the Board of Trustees of Edmonton Catholic Schools approves up to five point five million dollars from capital reserves for air handling units for Lumen Christie, dust collectors at facilities, and school door access controls at a variety of schools, and up to five million dollars from deferred capital for minor modernization work at Austin O'Brien High School, school fire alarm upgrades, junior high and high school science lab upgrades, and solar panels for St. Joseph's High School as part of Budget twenty-three, twenty-four.
Thank you very much, Chief Superintendent Martin. And Trustee Harris, I'll turn this back over to you to make this third motion, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I move that the Board of Trustees of Edmonton Catholic Separate School Division approves up to five point five million from capital reserves for the air handling units for Lumen Christie, dust collectors at facilities, and school door access controls at a variety of schools, and up to five million dollars from deferred capital for minor modernization work at Austin O'Brien High School, school fire alarm upgrades, junior high and high school science lab upgrades, and solar panels for St. Joe's High School as part of the twenty-two-three, twenty-four budget.
Thank you very much. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
Just very quickly, this is, as Chief Superintendent Martin has mentioned, this is very targeted dollars, which is specifically, you know, for these purposes. So when this was, when we had an opportunity to review this at Audit and Finance, this made a lot of sense to us. Very appreciative also of the upgrades for Austin O'Brien, but also for the junior high and senior high school lab upgrades, which is, I guess, the board and administration putting their money where their mouth is in relation to, you know, the supports that are necessary to continue to elevate our science results. So yeah, very supportive of this.
Thank you very much, Trustee Harris. And I do see Trustee Engel in queue. Go ahead, please.
Yes, I was just going to mention how the real strength of this district is. Whenever we look at results, we're able to say we're not where we want to be and figure out how we're going to get there. And Trustee Harris has pointed out the money going into the science labs. As for dust collectors, I have so many in my basement. I could help you out there, but I do approve this.
Thank you very much, Trustee Engel. And you know, and I am going to also comment on the solar panels for St. Joe's. I mean, that's obviously going to reap future benefits as well. So thank you very much. Seeing no other trustees in queue, I will call the vote at this time. And as all trustees are in favor, please note for the record that the motion is carried. And this will now, Chief Superintendent Martin, back over to you for the last and final motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And finally, based on the evidence provided in the twenty-two-three, twenty-four Division operating budget, the Board of Trustees determines that the following quality indicators have been met as per Board Policy twelve, Appendix B, relative to the current evaluation period, and they are quality indicator four point eight and eight point five.
Thank you very much. And Trustee Harris, if I may, please turn this back over to you to make this last motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. That based, I move that based on the evidence provided in the twenty-two-three, twenty-four Division operating budget, the Board of Trustees determines that the following quality indicators have been met per Board Policy twelve, Appendix B, relative to the current evaluation period, and that is quality indicators four point eight and eight point five.
Thank you. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And so, once again, thank you for ensuring that the quality indicators have been met. And at this time, we'll move ahead. We'll proceed with calling the vote. And so we have one trustee who hasn't voted. It's not coming up. Double checking here. Should we try it again? Does it, one more time? Yeah, if we could please get everyone to, once it comes, are we good? Okay, just one more time, please. Okay, there you go. Thank you very much, everyone. So all trustees have voted for the record. Please note that the motion is carried. Thank you very much. Okay, and so, and the next agenda item under business of the meeting is two point four ASBA twenty-two-three School Board Innovation and Excellence Award. And I'll turn it back over to you, Chief Superintendent Martin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so I would invite Superintendent Nakarado to come forward for this wonderful proposal for ASBA School Board Innovation and Excellence Award.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Trustees, Chief Superintendent Martin. The Alberta School Board Association and Excellence Award recognizes school boards for their role in launching innovative programs and initiatives that enhance student achievement. This prestigious award is sponsored by the document company Xerox and is awarded at the ASBA Annual Fall Meeting held in November. The award celebrates the value of trusteeships and recognizes the contributions school boards make to the quality of children's learning experiences in Alberta. Nominated projects should promote the jurisdiction's mission in advance student learning and be developed, influenced, and actively supported by the board, bold, innovative, and creative in purpose, sustainable with the present system or school, suitable for a broad range of children and abilities or having a significant impact on student achievement, cost-effective and client-supported, capable of being replicated by other school boards with similar conditions and resources, and successful in view of the program's primary objectives. Further, programs to be considered for nomination should improve academic achievement, serve diverse populations and address community changes, and build bridges among parents, the community, and other organizations as serve students. This year, Edmonton Catholic School recommends the submission of the Four Directions Wellness Program for this award. This program finds its origins in a gap that was identified during the pandemic, the need for Indigenous emotional and mental health supports for students and families. Our division has two Four Direction Wellness Specialists who work with students, families, and staff to build capacity for both personal wellness and supporting others. From an Indigenous perspective, wellness is often expressed by leading a life that invites the balance of mind, body, spirit, and emotion. For many Indigenous nations, these teachings are embedded in the medicine wheel. This program sees wellness being implemented at the individual, family, community, and organizational level. At the January public meeting, the board had the opportunity to take an in-depth look at the work of the Four Directions Wellness Program. This work is broad and engages the home, school, and community in contributing to the wellness of students and families, and has had spectacular results. This highly respected program truly exemplifies the criteria of the School Board Innovation and Excellence Award. And I'll turn it back to Chief Superintendent Martin for the recommendation.
Thank you very much. That program has just been such a pillar in your Department of Indigenous Learning Services. And thank you very much for being so innovative, Superintendent Nakarado. This has been spearheaded by you. And clearly, it's just been a godsend for all of us. And so, Madam Chair, Board of Trustees supports the nomination of the Four Directions Wellness Program for the ASBA two thousand and twenty-three School Board Innovation and Excellence Award.
Thank you very much, Chief Superintendent Martin, and of course Superintendent Nakarado and your entire team. Chief Superintendent Martin, you're right. The submission is absolutely brilliant. The Four Directions Wellness Program is truly an innovative initiative and does meet the criteria of that ASBA is requesting, not ASBA, the Xerox is requesting. To think that it originated in a gap that was identified during the pandemic and has become critical for building personal wellness that leads to success speaks truly to the extraordinary vision of Edmonton Catholic. So kudos to you and to your entire team. And as this is a motion, and I do see Trustee Mutalla in queue, I'll turn it over to you, Trustee Mutalla, to please make this motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Board of Trustees supports the nomination of the Four Directions Wellness Program for the ASBA two thousand and twenty-three School Board Innovation and Excellence Award.
Thank you, Trustee Mutalla. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
Yes, I would. Thank you to Chief Superintendent Martin and Superintendent Joan Nakarada and your whole team for submitting this beautiful program, this Four Direction Wellness Program, which has then provided Indigenous emotional and mental health supports for our students and families when most needed during the pandemic and after. It is a highly respected program with the teachings embedded in the medicine wheel, with the wellness that invites the balance of body, mind, and spirit and emotion. This program is implemented at the individual, family, and community and organizational level. And we are very grateful for this program, and thank you very much, because it does support all of our students and families. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Mutalla. And I will now open it up to the board and do recognize Vice Chair Trishansky in queue. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When we heard about it first at a previous meeting, I was overwhelmed, of course, with it and all its supports that were available for students and the creativity and the out-of-the-box thinking. And of course, that's where we thought it would lie and sort of end there. So it's just delightful to think that that's not where it ends, and it will continue. And the opportunity to submit this for the award is great. I'm already getting ready to stick it in the back of my car and drive away with it. I'm already getting ready to stick it in the back of my car and drive away with it. So we're so grateful for this and all for, all that you do for this. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Tychansky. And I do recognize trustee Harris in queue. Go ahead, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. There's so much about this that sort of resonates in relation to what really works in our, what was, some of the many things that work in our division, and that is connection to community and, and innovation. I'm, you know, the, the concept, we talked about it before, of opportunity favors the prepared mind, that, you know, in a, in a crisis like COVID, we are so connected into the community that, you know, these kinds of ideas can spark and take hold. And then the recognition that, you know, that potentially can be scaled beyond sort of the COVID crisis, right? And it can actually add significant value to our, to our community, to our students in our community. So, you know, we've talked about this before as well, never waste a crisis. It's lovely to see, you know, that we, we harness things that we capture in a moment of very, of great stress, and we can find a way through that to, to something that adds incredible value for our community and our students. Thanks very much for doing this.
Thank you very much trustee Harris. And I'll turn it back to you, trustee Mutala. Should you wish to close your motion at this time?
No, I'm good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And so we, we will, we'll proceed to call the vote then. And as all trust, I thought I saw all trustees are, are in favor. The motion is carried, and we look forward to the submission, and we will wait in great anticipation at the ASBA FGM in the fall. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, if I may, I would, with, with great pride that I bring this back to our Indigenous Learning Services staff, I know it will mean a great deal to them to know that you are willing to put your name behind the great work that they do. So thank you. It is sincerely appreciated.
Excellent, thank you. And thank you for doing that. Okay, and so we will now move on. There we go. Okay, so the last item under business of the meeting is item 2.5 on our agenda. And today, this involves the amendment of Board Policy 2 revisions. And of course, General Counsel Carbonic is already at the mic there. She will provide our board with further information to the specific nature of the amendments, as well as the process by which the board is required to follow in order to amend policies of this nature. General Counsel Carbonic, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chairperson Platso. Before we begin with the particulars of this matter, though, I want to continue with a bit of a theme that has, I wasn't aware of for today's meeting, but want to continue. I want to begin by acknowledging the exceptional work that Executive Director Susan McCauley has done to support the board in terms of your board policy review processes. As a result of Susan's efforts, I believe that the policy review and amendment process has evolved significantly over the past few years. It used to fall to me to do a lot of this work, and Susan has been just extraordinary in constantly reviewing board policies and identifying those pieces that require your attention. Once she does that, she ensures that any changes that are the result of that process or that are, are needed, as trustees, you're authentically engaged, usually in a meeting that she facilitates, that is no mean feat, I would suggest, with everybody's opinions at play, and that requires the support often of division administration. Susan's process ensures that by the time we get to this point, all of you feel that you have had an authentic opportunity to express your thoughts and positions, engage in meaningful discussion with your colleagues and with division administration, and you've arrived at a board policy position that is truly reflective of a democratic process. So my name is on these memos only because Legal Services is the repository of board policies. Susan truly does all the heavy lifting in terms of identifying needs to revise policies and the tremendous work to get to this point today. So I'd like to acknowledge her in that regard. In terms of the amendments that are before you today, it's all in relation to Board Policy 2, which is the role of the board, Appendix A, which is details your self-evaluation protest, process, sorry, and Appendix B, which is your board assignments of special responsibility. Board Policy 2, Article 10.2, requires that as a board, you undergo review process, not only during the orientation process, but also at least once per term to ensure currency and relevancy. So that's, today is part of that process. The board has spent a significant amount of time over the last year dialoguing in terms of the role of the board and its self-evaluation process. The resulting changes to Board Policy 2 and the appendices are attached for your review and have the clear, sorry, changes clearly noted. Board Policy 10 governs the process by which you can update your policies. In that regard, you're required to do three readings of any board policy or amendment. The first and second reading of any amendment to an existing policy can occur at one meeting. You can do the third and final reading of the amendment to a board policy at this meeting, only if you have unanimous consent to do so. And that can immediately follow the first and second reading. So based on all this, in order to consider the board policy amendments, our recommendations are included in the, in the board memo in your package, and it would be our recommendation that the board proceed with three readings to amend the board policy.
Thank you very much, General Counsel Carbonic. And before I turn it over to make this motion, we just want to thank you for recognizing our extraordinary Executive Director Susan McCauley. That's twice in one meeting, we're just saying. Thank you very much for that. And so in light of General Counsel Carbonic's review, we are looking for a trustee to please make this, to please make this motion required to pass first reading of the proposed amendments. And I do recognize Vice Chair Tychansky in queue. Vice Chair Tychansky, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Board of Trustees approves the amendment of board policies as attached and circulated to the Board of Trustees effective upon passing of this motion.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to your motion, Vice Chair Tychansky?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I will now open any questions or discussions to the rest of the board. And seeing none, back over to you. Would you wish to close your motion?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So at this time, we will call the vote. Thank you. And as all trustees are in favor, I will note for the record that the motion has passed. Thank you very much. Vice Chair Tychansky, would you like to move second reading of the proposed policy changes?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I would. I move that the Board of Trustees approves the amendment of board policies as attached and circulated to the Board of Trustees effective upon passing this motion.
Thank you very much. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I will at this time open any questions and/or discussions to the rest of the board. And seeing none, I'll turn it back over to you. Do you wish to close your motion, Vice Chair Tychansky?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. At this time, then, we will once again call the vote. Thank you. And so once again, as all trustees are in favor for the record, please note that the motion has passed. In order to proceed to the third and final reading of the policy amendments, trustees in attendance must provide unanimous approval to do so. Vice Chair Tychansky, would you like to seek unanimous approval of the board to move to third reading of the proposed amendments to the board, to the board policies?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Board of Trustees gives unanimous approval to move to third reading of the amendment of board policies as attached and circulated to the Board of Trustees effective upon passing of this motion.
Thank you very much. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I will now open up any discussion and/or comments to the rest of the board. And seeing none, I'll turn it back over to you, Vice Chair Tychansky. Do you wish to close your motion?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
So at this time, I will now call the vote. And once again, the motion is passed. Thank you very much, Vice Chair Tychansky. And so we will now proceed to the third reading. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Board of Trustees approves the amendment of board policies as attached and circulated to the Board of Trustees effective upon passing this motion.
So once again, an opportunity. Would you like to speak to your motion, Vice Chair Tychansky?
I should say yes, but no, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I will now open up any questions and/or discussions to the rest of the board. And seeing none, I'll turn it back over to you, Vice Chair Tychansky. Do you wish to close your motion at this time?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And so I will proceed to call the vote. And as all trustees once again are in favor, I will note for the record that the motion has passed. Thank you all. And this now takes us to 3.1, and thank you, General Counsel Carbonic. This now takes us to 3.1 Board Chair Report. And although the report is readily available, we'd like to highlight just a few areas in the report, including that we joyously celebrated and attended the, the Grace, our Grateful Advocates for Catholic Education Summit. And it was held here at Lumen Christie, and we were able to engage in discussions at that time to ensure that our children and future generations have the opportunity to learn and grow in our Catholic schools as well. The month of May afforded the board further opportunities to attend a number of our division's annual celebrations, and these events serve as reminders of the, of the remarkable work that is, that takes place in our division. And so, of course, first, we helped celebrate 495 individuals for reaching significant service milestones at the ECSD's Long Service Award Evening. Thank you to, of course, Superintendent Lang and Superintendent Kenner for inviting us to that, to that event, and all of our senior administration. The Board of Trustees also hosted its annual Board Retirement Gala, where trustees acknowledged the contributions made by our staff, a staff who, of course, we always recognize being at the heart of everything we do. On April 27th, the board was privileged to meet with students at Lumen Christie for the Be an Upstander Program, and we were extremely impressed by this as well because it was an opportunity that we were able to witness how our students are empowered and how they recognize injustice and use their strengths to create change. And this is but a mere smidge of what happens in our division. And so I will read the recommendation for the record that the Board of Trustees acknowledges receipt of the Board Chair Report on hashtag ECSD Faith Inspires, April 21 to May 25, 2023 for information purposes. And on that note, of all the incredible work happening in our division, we'll go on to 4.2 Chief Superintendent Report, and I'll turn it over to you, Chief Superintendent Martin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And given that some of you are needing to go off and watch our students perform with Yona Sistema, I am going to simply recommend that the Board of Trustees acknowledges receipt of the Chief Superintendent's Report on ECSD Faith Inspires, May 2023 for information purposes.
Thank you. And because we are going off to the performance, I'm not even going to commend you for all the outstanding work that you do on a daily basis, but thank you. And so that being said, this is not a motion, so I will read the recommendation for the record that the Board of Trustees acknowledges receipt of the Chief Superintendent's Report on hashtag ECSD Faith Inspires, May 2023 for information purposes. And I can't walk away by saying thank you for your exemplary work. So there, I did it in a short way. And this now takes us to 4.1 Closing Prayer, and we will call on trustee Taber to please lead us in prayer. Give me one second, trustee Taber, please. Oh, trustee Engel, I saw you in queue. My apologies. Did you want to speak? Sorry, give me one sec here. Okay, go ahead, please, trustee Taber.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As it is the last day of May, we will close by saying, in the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee. Blessed are thou amongst women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, Mother of God, pray for us sinners now and at the hour of our death, amen. In the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you very much, trustee Taber. And we are now looking for a motion to adjourn, and I do see Vice Chair Tychansky in queue. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we adjourn this delightful meeting.
Thank you. So for the record, I know we have to vote. My apologies, because trustee Engel will call me on that one, I'm certain of it. If we could all please vote to adjourn the meeting. And all trustees are in favor to adjourn the meeting, so the meeting is adjourned. And so have a wonderful evening. Thank you, everyone, for joining us today.